I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Dear Heavenly Father, I just thank you for this day. It's a day that you have made and we rejoice in it. Lord, I just thank you so much for everything that the commissioners have done for us in 2018, Lord. And I ask that period in 2019 that you be in this room, Lord, that you be with all of us. Lord, I just ask that you be with our troops as we go into the Christmas season and into the new year, along with our public safety folks, and, Lord, just all the county employees that do everything they can to try to help make this county just a little bit better every day. And I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Next up is going to be the approval of minutes from December 3rd, 2018, meeting on the energy and motion at this time. So moved. I'll second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes? Anything else? Saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Next up, it is the public hearing on the lease of the office space for the public offenders. That was advertised for 8:00. I will note at 8:04, but I will open the public meeting. If anybody has anything to say or any questions, you're welcome to step to the podium and state your name and address. Just for the record, if there's anybody that's not here, everybody here that doesn't know what we're talking about, we currently lease space for our public offender office in the Magoye Building across the road from the courthouse here. That was a one-year lease, which is up to the end of the year, so this is just renewing it for another year. Brian, do you have anything to add to that?
No.
Okay.
It's all against Doug, so I don't have to move again on these. I did last year.
Hearing nothing. And I will, at this time, 8:05, close the public hearing, and we'll move on with our business. Next up is the open of the annual county highway department bids. That was also advertised for 8:00, and it is now 8:05, so it's the attorney getting these things cut open.
Annual bids for the highway departments are as follows. A bid from, is it Bone or Bain Tracking? Bain Tracking, Crawfordsville. For sand and crushed stone. B O E H N. We also have a bid from Series Solutions, Crawfordsville, for diesel, gas, and other petroleum products. We have a bid from Core and Main. For here's the pipe tile and culverts. We have a bid from Hall Signs of Bloomington, Indiana, for traffic signs and control devices. We have a bid from Harris Stone of Bainbridge, Indiana, for stone, gravel, borrow slag. We have a bid from U.S. Aggregation Indianapolis for stone, gravel, and bar. We have a bid from Milestone Contractors Lafayette, Indiana, for cold mix, patch material, hot mix. We have a bid from Lincoln Park Stone of Terre Haute, Indiana, for crushed stone. And we have a bid from Connor Escovating for sand, topsoil, filter, gravel, stone. We have a bid from Metal Culverts Inc. for culverts and culverts and colors and culverts. Triangle Asphalt Lebanon for hot mix and related materials. Pops Tire Service, Crawfordsville, for tires, I would bet. Yes. James H. Drew Corporation for guardrails and other safety equipment. Bid from LGT Sales for diesel, gas, and other petroleum products. Marathon Petroleum Company for diesel and other petroleum products. Newton Oil Company Lafayette, Indiana, diesel and other petroleum products. St. Regis Culverts and drainage products. Civil Con Jeffersonville, Indiana, culverts and related drainage products. Keith Henderson, Colesville, guardrails and safety equipment. E3 Bridge Origated Pipe Culverts, Box Culverts, and Bridge Composites. Corks Dust Control Bowling Green, Indiana, for gravel road oil. Asphalt Materials Rockville, Indiana, for Brooklyn Church.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to take these under advisement. Time for the Highway Director and Engineer to review. So move. Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just a question. Dan, on the, you reviewed this a couple months ago on the new legislation passed by the legislature last year on bidding jobs. Did that pertain mainly to labor or to this?
Yeah, it would apply. There's a second exception in the bidding law for annual bids for the highway department, so none of that applies to them, and so we use the same procedure which they have. They'll evaluate, and the superintendent can accept all of them if he wants, and that doesn't mean he'll buy from them, but that means he knows what his price would be if he does. So it's more of a, it's more of having supplies available to him when he needs it. So there's a whole different process, so the other process we talked about is, won't apply to this.
Just one question. Any other questions? Before the vote, is there anybody here that felt that they submitted a bid that did not hear their bid talked about? Okay, she's taking them next door. They'll be available over there if anybody'd like to review them. I assume that's where she went with them? So if you're here and you had a bid and you'd like to review them next door in the auditorium office, you can take a look at them. At this time, I call for the question. All those in favor of taking these under advisement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is the auditor and the claims.
Alrighty. Okay, I have the payroll docket from December 7th in the amount of $363,715.14. And I have the accounts payable docket in the amount of $4,666,019.99. That's up because it includes some settlement checks.
At this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve the claims as presented.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the claims as presented. Any questions or discussion for the auditor?
I need abstaining from lines 19,332, 19,333, and 19,334.
All in favor of the approval with Mr. Bain abstaining from the ones noted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. What else, Jen?
That is all for now. We're moving ahead with settlement. I mentioned at the council meeting, it looks like about an average December settlement this year. And I hope I send it over to the state for approval on Friday. I hope to get it out today and start having checks.
So you should be able to give us our annual report at the January 4th meeting?
Lori, if we put on the January meeting, that we will, or whatever the date is, in that first meeting, that we will have the report from the auditor that we require to report a settlement.
All right, we're moving on. Is any reports from any elected officials or department heads? Andrea?
Yeah, just one thing. I just want to say thanks again for the engineers coming on holiday. I have a couple of employees who literally were in tears over this, and that makes a deal for them. So very appreciative of them.
Thank you for letting us know. Anybody else? Okay. Next up is 2019 annual contracts. We're going to have contracts for the building administrator, Mark Bondwell.
This is same as last year except the salary.
At this time, I'd entertain a motion for the contract for the building administrator for 2019.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. Mark, any, anything, any questions? Good?
No questions.
Okay. We appreciate everything you do for us, Mark, and be glad to see us moving forward again next year.
Thank you.
All in favor of the approval of Mark Bondwell, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes three to zero. Next up is our sheriff, Ryan Needham. At this time, I'd entertain a motion for the contract for 2019 for Sheriff Testy, or sorry, Sheriff Needham. I knew it'd only be a matter of time, Ryan. I apologize.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Ryan, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't.
All right. With that being said, I didn't call for a question. All those in favor of the contract for 2019 for Ryan Needham, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Jennifer, the council needs to approve this as well. Can we, if we get these down to you, can you see that they have another agenda?
Ryan, we'll get it down to you, and we'll need your signature as well. Next up is contract with Purdue Extension. Entertained with this one, Dan.
May I get approved of this Purdue Extension contract?
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the contract of, for Purdue Extension for 2019. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next up is the annual contract with Animal Welfare. I'd entertain a motion at this time?
So moved.
I guess we didn't get one. We're supposed to add one. So we get hold, you'll get hold of Kurt Holmes if you can get that. Okay. Thank you.
Are we drawing a motion?
So we really did have one?
No, we don't have all.
We have one.
Next up is Section Corner Agreement with Amy Woodall. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to continue our work moving forward with Section Corner perpetuation with contract for Amy Woodall for 2019.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Amy, have anything to add? Comments? All righty, all in favor of the agreement, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next up is the agreement for IT, agreement for 2019 with Edge IT. There's only two, two minor things in this. One is the date change, and then the other is the emergency call. They've added into this, even though they're not having a problem in our county as much, they've added some of their areas that, like on emergency calls in the middle of night and stuff, that the minimum bid would be one hour, not the actual time worked, which makes sense if they're getting up at 3:00 in the morning to help us out, so. At this time, I'd entertain a motion for approval for the contract with Edge IT for 2019.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Phil, you have anything to add?
I do not.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next up. Next up is the Highway Supervisor Jeremy Edwards. Jeremy Tholz.
I guess I guess.
What's important, your contract has your name for it.
I don't think, I don't think he even moved, though. You got your own made comment. He didn't even move. Although, I'd entertain a motion at this time.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion other than the fact it's Jeremy Tholz instead of Jeremy Edwards? Do you have anything to add, bud? At this time, I call for the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Guess you can stay after all. We'll need a signature from you as well. Next up is the 2019 contract for the county engineer, James Peck. I'm going to be sort of red before I do that, right? At this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve the 2019 contract.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Think that we have seen in the first year of this deal that this is a, something that's really saved us and a lot of money, and we haven't rained him off yet, believe it or not, because we've, a lot of things hadn't even been first year, and we sure appreciate it. All those in favor of the approval for 2019, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And then, it looks like under Jan's office, we have Invoice Cloud, Eagle Accounts, Master Touch, First Financial Lockbox, and GTS. Does that sound right? Hope that they're agreeing. That's even better. And Dan has reviewed all these. Do you guys have anything to say?
We have all of the contracts except for First Financial, so you'll have to do that one at all.
Okay.
We can do that. But yeah, these are just for all our regular services. Pretty impact statements, our audit system, difficult payment, and collection. Yeah, collections. So, nothing can be different.
Have you seen the contracts for First Financial? Do you want us to approve it and the signature later, or do we need to wait? You've not seen it at all? Okay. All right, so we'll take the First Financial off. The other four we can do at the same time. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the Treasurer's Office request for Invoice Cloud, Eagle's Account, Master Touch, and GTS.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Anything else to add, ladies? I'm going to take this opportunity to say a few things real quick about our treasurer. Where our treasurer will be leaving us here at the end of the year after her eight years of service as Treasurer of Montgomery County. And I'm sure that through her work and all the things that she's done, and she has made this a smooth transition, and it'll just keep on flowing like it has, and I I want to say, Dan, we thank you very much for your service and everything you've done. I don't think there's anybody that I've seen that ever comes to our meeting that sits back and much more relaxed and never seems like it bothers her, or maybe on the inside it is, but she doesn't show it to us. But a great job, Dan. We appreciate what you've done for Montgomery County. If you ever feel like you need something to do on a couple days a month or whatever, we'll still be having the meeting. Just want to extend the offer, right? At this time, then, I would call for the question on the four agreements for the Treasurer's Office. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I'll get these as soon as they're over. Is that sorted? That brings us to the old business, Employee Health Insurance Third Party Administrator. Do you have anything you want to say to that? You got any questions, anybody?
Look, I wasn't sure. Does this include the Cobra?
Yeah, it includes all.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, so then, this just basically takes this third party administrator and moves it underneath the current system rather than having two different people doing basically our stuff for us. So at this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve the third party administrator for the employee health insurance.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion or questions? Any discussion or question from the audience? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Passes. Okay, that's it. Under old business, moving on to new business. Um, Montgomery County, Fountain County GIS Data Exchange Agreement. Dan has reviewed this and recommended no changes. Do you have anything to add, either one of you guys over there?
This, this is prompted by Montgomery County. Uh, Wayne Towne Town Marshal asked for some Fountain County information. Um, in order for WTH to give us that information, vice versa, to give Fountain County our information, they wanted this agreement in place. No money's changing hands, just information, parcel data, road center lines, and addresses. For some cross-county boundary, nope.
This time I'd entertain a motion for the agreement.
So move, second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Is this something we need for other counties as well, if we're...
Some situations we already shared data with other counties. Uh, but it's county to county. This is actually through WTH because both counties have WTH thick math. Uh, so they're memorializing that there, but we do share data with other counties.
Any other questions? Questions for the audience? If you're done, all those in favor of the agreement between Montgomery County, Fountain County, GIS Data Exchange, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Next up is the agreement between McCormick Engineering LLC, Hydraulics Analysis Design Plan for Kennedy Road 750 East and Overcoat Road Small Structure Replacement 950 South and 750 North. Evidently, Mr. Peck has something he wants to say.
Uh, basically, these are small structural replacements. Um, we have these in the budget for next year. Uh, two of them are additional ones are on Overcoat Road with the bring about we had, uh, just recently. Kind of compromised those too. So these are, um, basically five culverts. We're gonna bid those out, um, probably in, um, two different bid packages so we can get an idea of these costs. Bridge 182, uh, is northeast of Ladoga. Um, this one, we will do all the engineering and permitting this year, and that is planned on construction in 2022. Uh, their services include not only the engineering construction plans, but all the bidding, uh, services, all the permits through DNR, IEM, and also the Corps of Engineers.
Okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion for...